I want to call to order today's special meeting of Jackson City Council. We are at CNPD located in Pearl. I want to thank everybody for being with attendance. Let the record reflect that we do have Form 4 at present at this moment. At this time, just want to give a couple of housekeeping rules. Want to make sure, first of all, that everybody's mic, I mean, everybody's phone is on silent or turned off. The mics in here are extremely sensitive and will pick up your conversation regardless of where you are in this. Want to take the time to also thank CNPD for hosting us and allowing us to come here so that we can handle these cities' business. At this time, I would like to yield the floor to Mr. Muff to bring the screenings. If you would, let's give him a hand. It's a cover.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I just want to say on behalf of CNPD how pleased I am and thankful to be able to have you meet here today. I think in my history of thirty-two years at CNPD, we have not had a Jackson City Council meeting on-site, so we thank you for that. But also, I think it's, we'd like to tell you how much we appreciate being involved in the redistricting process and it's something we have a great deal of experience with. And Jackson is part of two CNPD and much more that we're involved in. So we want to welcome you and thank you for being here. Anything that can let us know.
All right. Thank you so much. Colleagues, there, before we get into redistricting, there are some items that we need to carry over our emergency items that we need to take care of. And if there's any explanation from any directors, I would ask that you would come around toward, on my right, to the podium right here to address the five. All right. With a Kirk, proceed with item number one.
Order of the city of Jackson's classification and compensation plan to add job classification of deputy chief of energy officer at a pay range fifty, lieutenant officer at a pay range thirty-four, procurement operations manager at a pay range of thirty-four, fixed asset manager at a pay range thirty-one, vendor eight-fourth agent at a pay range twenty-eight, and fiscal operations manager at a pay range thirty-four.
So, it's been moved on property sector on this item. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir. Councilman Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I cannot support this matter because of my concern over other departments where we have been woefully, we are woefully behind the eight ball on adding, finding people to fill slots for engineers in the Public Works Department and a Public Works Director. And so to add more people to Finance or more people to Legal Department, which they want to do, I can't support that until we get the proper personnel to oversee the Public Works Department, which delivers the immediate, you know, they're their, a frontline with our constituents, whether it's roads or potholes or whatever. And so I can't support this measure.
All right. Any other questions or comments at this time? All right. Here and another. All in favor? Opposed? All right. Item carries three, one. Next item, item two.
Order of the authorized executive contract between the city of Jackson and various organizations for the use of twenty-twenty-two emergency solutions grant. Pro應for the city of Jackson for a total of one hundred forty-five eighty-nine hundred dollars and thirty cents. From the Department of Housing and Urban Development for eligible access related to regular rehousing, homelessness prevention, street outreach, emergency shelter, and homelessness management information system.
So, all right, it's been moved on property sector. This colleagues, as you remember, this came as an emergency item and we want to successfully get it on the floor. But let me tell you, this is money for the use of twenty-twenty-two. We do not want to get the half of the city money back. And we want to make sure we utilize this to help cure our problem when it comes to homelessness and the prevention of it. Are there any other questions or comments? Go with you, Councilman Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, this was a contentious issue at the last meeting and it didn't get the votes to get on the agenda as an emergency item. And there were some headlines afterwards that the council was stopping the support of the money because it is really important money and the organizations that is service of the homeless population and other folks out there that need their assistance, they need the money as well. And, but the headline was council wouldn't stop the money going to the, to these services that are needed to serve the folks that are, you know, sometimes in dire conditions. One of the issues I had was, and I didn't vote against it in the emergency item vote, but I don't think I did, but the item said that the spending has to take place between, I think, one October of twenty-twenty-three and thirty September of twenty-twenty-four. So that begs the question of why did it come to the council in late May? You know, eight months into the period when the money was supposed to be there to be spent? And I'd like to know why it took so long to get to the council, then it was an emergency item as opposed to being on the regular agenda. Can somebody answer that question?
I think it's already on. Just state your name. Am I correct? It should be on. Just state your name.
Rich from Jefferson, Deputy Director for Housing and Community Development. I say, now, your question may be specific as far as our answers specific. What was the question again?
The question, I don't have to see the specific item in here. We may not have been, I think, the item, I remember, this is from my memory on the, when it was brought to the council last week. Said that the time period for the spending of the money was, I believe it was one October of twenty-twenty-three through thirty September of twenty-twenty-four. And so my question was, if that's right, you know, maybe my memory is mistaken, why was it that the council didn't, it didn't get to the council for their vote until late in May? You know, eight and a half months into the time period.
Yes, I understand your question. But let's keep in mind that once these, once these grants, once they're executed, there's a lot of processes, processes that take place. For this particular ESG grant, the grant agreement was fully executed February of twenty-three. During that time, we have our applications that are sent out. So for ESG, the application to be sent out April of twenty-three with a closing of around the end of June. We had to review those applications. That took place from September, October of twenty-three. Award letters went out January of twenty-fourth. Once we have the award letter sent out and we have meetings with the potential readies, which took place March of twenty-fourth, at that point, that's when the, the July item went across council. So there are a lot of steps that take place from the point of the execution of the grant agreement to the point where this July item reaches council.
We have to do a better job. If that's what it is, we got to do a better job of processing grants like that. That's a year and a half to process a grant. And I just find that, I'm not blaming you, but I just find it unacceptable that it takes that long to get to, where they've only got ninety days left in a period. If you got, if we got it in, in early twenty-twenty-three, it shouldn't take, you know, fifteen months to process it and get it to, so that the people actually have the money. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Liz.
Yes, thank you. And I do agree with my colleague. This has been a long time coming. And after the last city council meeting, President Banks, I got phone calls from these nonprofits. And to your point, Mr. Foot, they have been waiting for this money for a long time and they need it desperately. And so I do encourage us all to put in, take action on this today so the money can be released to these agencies and benefit our communities.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Yes, sir. Mayor.
Briefly, and as Councilman Foot stated, this is not a statement of blame to you or, or I don't even know to who precisely it goes to. But, you know, we will admit that the efficiency of how we allocate grants, the metrics by which we, we evaluate their effectiveness, all desires are true and that's what we're working. That's, that's one of my main points of contention is that we not only want better efficiency in terms of when resources go out, but the measurables that they are meeting the benchmarks of what we're trying to achieve.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Here and another. All in favor? All right. Item carries five, zero. Let the record reflect that we do have Form five now. All right. Next item.
Order of authorized executive agreement with the police corporation for professional acting services for the Department of Information Technology.
So, it's been moved on property sector on this item. Colleagues, just to bring to speak, this item did not make it to the floor due to some of the contention about making sure that the council has access to units. However, what, what came to my attention and what we did learn through conversations and, Councilman Liz, if you want to speak to it, is that this is a desperate need to make sure that they're able to move the equipment from Udo Wealthy. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Banks. After this item didn't get on the floor, I did get phone calls from the State Department of Archives and History because this equipment absolutely has to be out of that basement before they can demolish the Udo Wealthy Library or remove all of that project. And so they're really anxious to see us take positive action on this item.
All right. Any other questions or comments, colleagues? All in favor? All right. Item carries five to zero. Next item.
Order of authorized executive agreement between the Jackson Police Department and Interchange Data LLS, LLS Intelligence Software for a subscription term of thirty-six months.
So, second, it's been moved on property sector on this item. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Can somebody from JPD tell us about this? What, what this LLS intelligence software does and how much it costs?
Okay, great. And if you can, I believe four or five of them, just kind of go through and kind of give an explanation on both of them.
Eric Fox, Jackson Police Department. So, a few months back, the Chief of Police opened up a new bureau within our department, the Intelligence Bureau. So it allows us to do several things. One of the things it allows us to do is get proactive in front of different criminal activities that are going on inside our city limits. So that requires certain types of software and people, of course. And so this particular software, we have two on the agenda today, but this particular one allows us to look deeper into the suspect that we have without being too public about what we're, what we're doing in the intelligence part of it. But most of it's open record stuff, public, public source stuff. So it just allows us to look.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I'm just, I'm sorry. It allows us to look a little bit more in depth of telephone numbers, seeing who those numbers are attached to. So we have these mostly violent crimes is what we've been using it for here lately. And it's a, to be honest with you, Councilman Foot, we've solved twenty-six violent crimes in the city over the past three or four months utilizing this software. So it allows us, it also allows us to predict a little few crimes too where they're going to happen in the city. That's used by using its algorithms, attaching it to our camera systems and identifying where we have crime and where we predict crime is going to take place as we, as we evolve into the past.
All right. Mayor.
If you have, if you, how much it costs?
So it's a, on over a three-year term, it is, it should be there in your agenda. I don't really have the.
Eighteen months?
Say it again, man?
Eighteen months.
Yeah, over three years. So it's, it was, it was originally going to be done in one year, but we did three years so we could just get it out of the way. It's all funded too. It's not, we're not asking for any money out of our budget to use it. We've secured a, a grant. It's a gun crimes grant. And the gun crimes grant fully pays for it. We were the, we were only three, we are one of three agencies in the country that awarded this. The grant's total about seven hundred thousand dollars. So it's going to fully fund what we're doing in the intelligence.
Well, send out the, I found the page here. It says fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars?
Is, is that over the three-year period?
Yeah, yeah. Item four is fourteen, item five is eighteen.
That's what, that's, that's a lot of money left, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Sure, yeah. So it's going to fund the entire program we're doing. We're going to bring more stuff to the council real soon.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just want to commend Officer Fox and Chief, Chief Wade. This, this technology is really invaluable. And I know that we don't have an endless checkbook. The unfortunate thing is that over the years, we've seen a sharp rise in crime amongst our younger offenders. The good thing about, and there is a good thing to derive from that, is that a lot of their activity is displayed and advertised on social media. So it allows us to become better informed in how we address the violent crime and violent circumstances. So I certainly support this and really emphasize the invaluable nature of this technology.
Right there. Any other questions or comments on this? All right. All in favor? All right. Item carries six, zero. Let the record reflect that we do have Form six. All right. Item five.
Order of authorized executive agreement between the Jackson Police Department and Huster Computer Software for a subscription term of thirty-six months.
So, it's been moved on property sector on this item. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir. Councilman Foot.
I'd be interested if Officer Fox could tell us about what this does, this software.
Yes, sir. And I'd be delighted to take it back. So I'm really, really excited about this software. I really indulge in how excited I am. As you all know, we've had a real-time command center for a few years now. Certainly are, I'm not so sure if you all know about it. We have people from all over our country come and visit this center, okay? And since, since that time, since Assistant Chief Brazil has established this, this particular facility within our, in our city and our department, what's happened, all of these agencies, including Pearl, Mississippi, all of Rankin County, all of, just about all the way up to Tupelo to, to down to the coast, they're utilizing this, this technology. So this, this particular technology, Hooster, is, all of this stuff is going in together. It's all going to be combined with our co-logic that we use. Up until recently, our software, basically when you go in, you have log out of one to go to the other. It doesn't talk to one another. So we're able to scan those databases all at the same time. So Hooster, it really, it's uniquely, it surrounds more like phone numbers. How we can say this phone number belongs to you and, and without being too public about it, of course, it really helps us with the telephone industry of seeing who belong, who have what phone and what they're using. A lot of our crimes are being, are using our telephones. So AI technology allows us to scan the three thousand cameras that we have in the city. And, and if you have phones that are connected, that are constantly trying to connect to Wi-Fi devices and things like that, we're able to see what those connections are. So without going too in-depth.
Uh, Mayor.
Yeah, just quickly, Fox, I didn't want you to think that you aren't doing a good job, so I was just excited. You're doing a great job.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Councilman Hart.
Yeah, I just want to get, ask Legal Wade in on this.
Sure.
Drew Martin, City Attorney. We weighed in on the contract. It's a single-source contract and was legally sufficient. I think you're probably asking about the technology itself.
And, and the, any potential invasion of privacy.
So all, the blue light cameras are all constitutional and legal and any information that's gathered from them can be analyzed in any way the police are able to do so because they're, they're public and everyone knows they're there. So this is really a tool that aids them in doing more analysis faster, that there's no legal or constitutional issue to use the technology.
With the telephone.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilman Foot.
I just got a question. On the way this is worded here, it says, it's very much like the previous one. Says a term of thirty-six months for a sum of eighteen thousand nine fifty, which ends thirty-eight months from the purchase date. Is that, is that because it takes two months to get it put up or together?
So we're actively using it as a trial, of course, right now. So I'm not sure why it says thirty-eight months. That would be a part of the city legal question. Maybe it's a race period I was to get on, get on check. I'm not so sure. We have a sign, do you think, because the council has an approval, as I guess, so it has to go again and off to the next, of course.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? All right. Item carries, you next. All right, colleagues, now we come to the discussion part of redistricting. Let me go over, in front of you, everyone has a clicker. And on the clicker has a red dot in case you want to point out this area on this map. And let me just remind those that just came, if you notice, there are no mics on this table because the mics are in the ceiling and they are very, very sensitive. And so they will pick up, every conversation will be picked up on this live stream. So just want to again encourage you to make sure that you're miced. Yes, sir.
President, I have a problem getting on life's, life size. Is this being recorded?
It is being recorded, streamed via Facebook. After this, I believe it's going to go back to.
It will go back to the website to swag if they index our meetings and they will upload it to our website.
But it is being streamed live via Facebook. It's just not life size. We don't have the life size capability out there.
Do I have any penalty flags that I can?
Yeah. Somebody give Mayor some red flags.
Mr. Banks.
Yes?
Um, I'm just wondering why I'm so forward then from all the other city councils and courses. Is it something I said?
No, you can come there.
I mean, I'm going to do a reaching far.
No, no, y'all, y'all can do that. You can come next to me.
Okay. In there some role that we have to be in order.
No, no, I don't think we have social distance in here.
One, two.
He said in order.
In order.
We don't have to be. All right. So I'm going to ask if you could go and give us, go and give us a summary so that we can start and, and walk us through.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm David Wade with CNPD. Just kind of give you the rundown of the basics of what you're looking at. Of course, the, the map is live. We can move these wardlines, shift them around, but just to keep the basics. You're looking at ideal population, about twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven per ward. That's based on the twenty-twenty census population count of the lower.
Number one more time.
That's twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven. Is the ideal population. That's based on the twenty-twenty census count of about one hundred fifty-three, six ninety-nine of blue citywide. So we just divide that to seven ways. Per the US Department of Justice and Voting Rights Act guidelines, we are allowed what they call a top-to-bottom deviation, not to meet or exceed ten percent. And the reason for that is they recognize that we can't get the exact same number of persons in every ward. So the, the idea here, you see these percent deviation numbers, the board one being one of your highest, over fifteen percent over, ward five being your lowest with twelve, nearly thirteen percent under. Ideally, we would want to get each of these deviations, whether it's a negative number or a positive, under five percent, five percent or less. That way, when we combine the heaviest populated ward and your lightest populated ward, that combined difference does not meet or exceed ten percent. So the goal here is to get those as low as possible. And as we work through this, of course, these numbers here, we also see the percent. Well, the VAP is not on here, but on your chief that's out here. Oh, eighteen, okay. It's worth a difference. VAP is voting age, population are eighteen years and older as of twenty-twenty. So that's what we're looking at here. But we're mainly concerned with the total population. As I turn this over to Tony and Gray at your direction, they can move the wardlines and you will see the numbers change live as we work through this. Yes, sir?
Has there been any, for what we're looking at now, this is the current lines, right? Nothing has been changed?
Nothing has been changed. This is your current ward plan as we stand today, which has a top-to-bottom deviation of twenty-eight point one two percent. So well above the allowed ten percent. So we, we need to, our goal is to get under that, obviously get it under ten percent. So we will, there's, as President Banks mentioned, there are pointers in front of you that are kind of spread out there. Y'all can kind of guide, guide us and direct us where to shift those lines around and we can kind of just work through this.
Okay. Your incumbent locations are marked as well.
Look for the blue stars. You see your names?
The blue stars.
And you said, you got our actual address on here.
Yeah.
Okay. You said that the lines hadn't been altered at all, right?
Correct.
Family West Orphication.
Yes, we did.
Up here. And the boundary line for, for ward five is.
Right here.
Yes.
You sitting on there.
Okay, okay, that is true.
Yeah.
That's for sales things.
Let.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Break, break it back out so we can kind of see everything. Let me, let me just start because I just want to see what happens. If I was, if I was to take that Raymond Road line, bordering me and Ward five. Bordering me and Ward five, go down. Raymond Road, yeah, go down. Go down. Go down. All right. If I was to take my, those lines and bring them all the way down to MacDow.
And what you just turned on there is the population for each census block. And then Tony, I think was asking if you could select those. That way we can kind of see live how it changes.
Yes, that's all this right here and bring my borderline right here, MacDow. Actually, I want to see what.
Who picks it up?
Ward five will pick up. And then I have to pick up some over in Ryan's Ward.
Yeah, south side.
Yeah, on the south side. Okay.
So the column here on the far left shows you the pending changes of what it would have done from these numbers that are at the bottom. Once we commit a change, it shows up here. But while it's pending, you're going to see it in these columns on the left.
All right. So it will bring him up. It, it, to twenty-five?
It was.
To twenty-five. To twenty-four and it will bring me down to sixteen.
Can we pause for just one second?
Where's, no, I don't see it.
It was in that column.
So this is the same plan. I just made a copy of it so we can make a proposed plan from this.
Mr. President. Say it one more time.
I was, we don't want to make changes to your existing plan so we can keep those numbers. I made a copy of your existing plan, called it a proposed plan, and we'll make changes to it. Is that it?
He's, he's just going to catch up, give us just a second.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, okay, what's going to be our format for doing this? For, for adjusting these lines, just.
It, it suggests that it come from us. I mean, we're looking at the population and we're trying to achieve that twenty-one nine.
Okay. So when it becomes between you and my ward, then, then what do we do?
I just want to see if you don't, yeah, because I know that you need.
Yeah, and I, and I do. But I want to take away that, that other part over there to the left, which, I mean, then I'll have a smooth line of Raymond Road. Because right now, you know, I just assume that's out there basically between two wards and it doesn't really make sense sticking there. Now, I would look for going in another direction. Now, I would look for going in another direction as far as picking up population instead of that area.
Okay. I just, it just suggests, because it just made it even for both of us, Macgavil would become borderline, instead of it being a whole. Well, go ahead with your suggestion.
My suggestion is that little, uh, area there to the left, right here. First of all, I'd like that line to be going just straight across, that area there. Because it's, it's wedged between two wards, and it really doesn't make sense that sticking down, uh, into, uh, Ward Five, sticking down into that.
So, did I read that right, that that would, uh, take five hundred eighty-six, uh, residents away from Ward Five, is that, in that one block?
Yes, in that one group, you are removing five hundred eighty-six.
And based on, just understanding this whole process, based on where the, uh, census data is, Ward Five, because they actually have to increase the number, so this is, this is taking you the opposite direction.
I understand, I understand, but I'm looking at, uh, look, that's, uh, that's just sticking out there between two wards. That's, to me, that's looking improved, and I know I need to pick up some, but I prefer not to go below Raymond Road and picking up extra. Uh, I prefer to go to the, uh, to the east, uh, or, or maybe even to the north, uh, in my ward. I mean, are we just, are we starting here?
No, 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 you're fine, you're fine.
What are we doing?
You're fine, you're fine.
Uh, can you scan up, scan out, please?
I mean, you got, you just got to figure out where you want to gain.
Yeah, I want to gain to the, either to the east or to the north.
What if you took that block that Councilman Banks just offered you?
Well, it would eat it all away.
Right now, what I'm looking at is, uh, uh, I have some of the neighborhoods down there to the, to the, to the southeast. I would prefer to go over to the east and pick up, and have a sense of continuity. What I'm looking at, and, and that area to the north, uh, let me show you, over there around Ward, Ward, uh, West Street, right there. That area makes sense, because what I, what I will be doing is I will be keeping those people, the neighborhoods together there. This area right here.
Just that small area?
Just right here.
Okay, that hole. And as Tony is selecting, if he selects too much, let us know.
Let's hope his scope's way up.
And then the area to the east. Over there, in this area here.
Does that give you what you need?
That's okay.
How many is?
Okay, that's... Twenty-nine...
Okay.
Four ninety-six.
Okay.
You gained nineteen hundred fifteen people, would that change? So, you're still, you still would...
Did you, did you give him the area that he first talked about?
Yes, sir.
You gave number two down south?
Well, no.
Took it away.
Took that area out.
Yeah, and, and again...
So, he lost population and then added what he, at Ward Three.
I can, I can un, undo that, but...
No, I mean, it's...
Well, if, if you don't undo it, then he will be right at target.
Yeah, this area right here.
Yeah, if you, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think one of the areas, I have a problem down in that area with dumping abandoned houses, uh, over.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, is because of the, it's down there, which there, a lot of folks, uh, so- sometimes they don't know which ward they're in. And so what they're doing is, and there are some strong houses over there, uh, but it's, it's kind of a no man's land.
And my approach is that, okay, if I can keep folks together, then we can establish, okay, you are in this particular ward, therefore, uh, therefore we can work with you a little bit easier. Then that area, go up, please, in the slide, let me down, please.
I'm sorry.
Then that area right there, it's, it's just, it doesn't make sense. Uh, out of all my other areas, it's easier for me to control this, even some of this.
So, so let's, let's, let's look at this, uh, Councilor, since you were the one that was in the neck of the most, let's go ahead and try to get yours to a good place, and then the rest of us will chime in on, on, on.
What about right here?
Yeah.
What's that?
That might pick them up.
What's that?
South Drive.
He, he and I cross streets. Up here, some folks don't know who it's called.
Yeah. That gets them almost right there, it does. Go ahead with your setup.
Yeah, how much, um, how many, what's the population difference?
So, now you... Okay, so Ward Five, if we did all of these changes, would be a negative two point seven, which is a great, a great number. Um, you would be only five hundred and ninety-two, so almost six hundred people low from the ideal. So, if, if that was a start, uh, to, is, is President Banks said, to get you to a good spot, that would be a good spot.
Well, they like you.
So, as we change these colors, just so you understand the color, background will change, the purple line is your current line, so you can see the change.
And, and the recommended is twenty-one nine, basically twenty-one nine, correct?
Correct, if we split the city's population seven ways, that is the ideal number for seeking.
Is this Terry Road here? That's Terry Road?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, and, and this is, is yours, then? And is this Battle Hill area here?
Councilman Stokes, want to be a participant? Make this discussion about...
Nah, he's, I mean, it's, it's me, he voted, voted for us to have here, he should, he should be here. All right, talk, talk to one of us about, you know, how, how he feels. Hopefully he'll make the next one if he's not in the way.
Can we pause five now and perhaps get somebody to join in there?
Pause?
I mean, just, just go along with this for right now.
Oh, oh, pause of five?
Yeah, and just look at somebody to join in.
Okay, all right, all right, I'll go, I'll go to, uh, Councilman President.
Like it.
So, uh, as you can see, Ward Four is from really strange. It's, uh, well, it's probably as, as linear as...
Got a little bit of a...
Exactly, now, I live way over here, as you can see, I'm almost an outlier.
You need to move.
But, um, my, my desire is to inherit more northwest Jackson territory.
Northwest?
Northwest.
Meaning you.
That's not...
Yeah, because... Because that will also allow Councilman Lee to eat up some of one, since he has an abundance of growth. Fifteen, you know, fifteen percent he gained, uh, and so...
If he'll, if he'll tip me, I want that.
And so, even, even if we went... Even if we went east a bit, again, this is so drawn inevitably, if that makes sense, that, uh...
What's the top, um...
For, for me, and to keep the total, this is right when I got elected, I'm going to have to do everything twice. Two town halls. Yeah. Two distributions. Yeah. Two programs, one for the south and one for the north. Yeah. Because the folks south aren't coming north, north isn't coming south. Thank you, sir. And so, if we could find a more central, a way, a better way to centralize, uh, where I am, then that's kind of what I'm...
What's that, um, what's the, okay, where you live, what's the street above that, that's Northside Drive?
That's Northside Drive.
Okay, and then it goes into, what is that up at the top?
This is like Ashley Acres.
Okay, that's not a ward, but I'm talking about that part, your ward, that, right there, what's that area? What is that, it's like... Okay, there's the...
It's drawn like that? So, yeah, that's... I got part of Bowlin, I split Bowlin with, uh, Stokes, and, uh...
I always thought that was mine.
Yeah, there are some little pockets, that, that's Northwest Hills right there.
Okay, and then if you were just to keep going down Northside Drive, what it all is... And that's the queen, and like, if you picked up all of that part of mine, Northside Drive and down, what does that do?
So, in other words, you're saying if...
If we use Northside Drive as...
As your board.
I've lost too much.
But you had to go east, you got to go left, pick up east. Can you, can you go somewhere?
Probably don't sound too happy about me going east.
Somebody got to go. And then somebody got to go, that bird is going to go further toward. What about over here?
Okay, let's look over here.
Do you want me to make that change?
Yeah, you can.
What?
Well, I can always...
What is that area that's the queen?
That's like, oh, this is like, well, Powell needs to...
No, I have a whole here. Oh, you're going in the three?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you'd be good at, yeah.
But you got to a point where you've got to give up people now.
You're going to give up in the south?
Yeah, once, once you go down, look at the south, that's what you're going to give up.
Okay.
There should be two stars and seven.
I know the question you said, get rid of. Here, at here?
We have to start next to...
So, how about eighteen?
Yeah, the constant...
Well, we can see what the numbers look like, because I know this is a, a pretty big boxy.
Yeah, so we have to start with the, the next ward that we're going, we have to add to that ward, we can't add separately from, does that make sense?
Okay.
So, we can start over here.
Go ahead.
We can't leave this as an island.
Exactly.
It has to, it has to touch.
That's fine, because it's already an island. We can un-ivide it.
That's right.
That makes sense? They call me anyway. Where is that?
So, if we did those changes, Ward Four is basically zero. Wow, wow.
But, but you still have it, uh...
That's with mine, with taking...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you want to yield right there?
Yeah, with the yield right now.
At least Ward Six way over, at least Ward Six way over populated, right?
That's fine.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
All right. Who, 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 who are we next?
Let's go to two.
All right.
Yeah, look how it's added all down. I thought we, I thought we, I thought we... Can I gain that part on the right side of Northside Drive?
On the right side of Northside Drive? That's, that, that, that's...
What is the Ward One?
Where it just kind of goes up.
At this configuration, what is the population of Ward Two? Can you put those numbers up?
See, it's right here. But that's, that's with that part taken out of Brian.
And that's with all the changes made to the farm. You, you need to go, like, taking Atkins and...
Can you, where, I want to see the whole Ward Two.
Look how short Ward Three is now, because you're taking some stuff from Ward Three, it's down to...
Going to... Uh, actually, you don't, you don't...
Yeah.
At Ward Seven, so maybe I need to go into three?
You have to go in, you can't go into one.
Go into one?
Yes, you're going to have to go into one.
Okay, what if we did up to Ridgewood Road?
Uh, from Catalina Dale or...
Yeah.
Atkins.
Atkins, yeah.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Get it?
Would you want to go up?
Yeah, we can go up.
I thought you was going to get all that up there? Get more residential?
That's pretty close. I would say it's not there.
Still not there? That brings you, that would put you at negative four. Okay, I was only at negative one, so now it works.
I thought you were going to say Atkins Boulevard.
No, after we made those last changes, you were at negative ten. Okay, so we, Atkins Boulevard North.
Yeah, and go north, like the other side, the east side of Catalina, where all the stuff is.
Right there.
Yeah, I, yeah, okay.
Atkins and going north.
Yeah, to, I thought that was to Ridgewood.
No, no, that Ridgewood was north and south.
Yes.
You need, you need to get something around the east and west and go north. Like, like that commu- that community where Larry... And behind it, you're taking it north out of there.
I'll do that, if, you know, Councilman... What about just that, well, can we...
Hold on.
Well, I've got a neighborhood meeting tonight that you'll have to go to.
Okay, so this is going to be, this will probably be too much, so if you wanted to back out, where would you back away?
Back there, I would say right there, yeah, back there. Back out with your personal.
That, with that part there?
Yeah. You right there.
How's that? So, this puts you at three point one eight percent. Okay.
All right, you yielding right here?
I'm yielding to Ward One, or seven.
All right, uh...
And Ward, so Ward One, which was your highest, is now down to one point five eight. Ward Two is at three point one eight. Three is negative fourteen point nine seven. So, we're good, me and you.
No, it's, we, we... Problem is, you got to get Stokes, let, let me, see, I'd like to... Can I ask a question about, on behalf of Mr. Stokes, on Ward Three?
Yes, sir.
There's a, a part of Ward One from, that has, um...
Chestnut.
I fifty-five, um, Northside Drive, North State Street, and Meadow Brook Road.
This area?
Yeah.
That's what you need.
Can you see how much population is in that area? What that does to Ward Three and Ward One?
Start with the, start with the small block in the purple.
No, I'm sorry, this is what I'm asking for, right there.
Oh, right there, okay.
Take it all the way to I fifty-five for just for, just, no, not...
I'm a flex person.
What air, whatever.
That's fine.
Right there, it's on Northside Drive. So, what is that population there?
So, that would put Ward Three at negative eight percent, so that's a change of fif- about fifteen hundred people is what you would pick up right here. Yeah, but now, um...
Well, well, seven might make some concessions.
Yeah, because seven is now less than...
Seven might make some concessions. You want to, let's, let's, you're right there, let's go to Councilman Lee's. Can you keep everything like this?
Okay, well, that's Cottage Grove, and I love Cottage Grove. Um, and they love me, and that's going to be, I, I, well, here's what Mr. Banks is rightfully bringing up. We really kind of divided them, and, um, it's Mr. Stokes, and we divided. One thing that's not come up, that, you know, uh, you got to keep in mind, Rachel... That, you know, uh, you got to keep in mind racial balance as well. And that, that is a concern of mine, I mean, I really feel like I should remember.
Um, I, I, and I guess, uh, looking at this percentage, uh, what, is, is there a certain? What is that, is there a certain law when it comes to the amount of African-American versus, or, or anything, when she talks about racial balance, is, is there anything to clarify there?
Uh, majority minority Ward, electable Ward, is it historically considered, in Ward cases, is considered about sixty-five percent? Minority population, uh, so that would be, kind of your goal is to get it. If it was a historically minority Ward, then you would be looking sixty-five percent or above.
It's not a law, but it's a rule of thumb.
It's a rule of thumb. All right, first.
Okay, um, so you're asking, what am I willing to give up?
No, we both gotta.
I don't wanna give up.
Ask you, gotta give up most.
Ask you, is I get your deal? Are you where you need to be though? Oh, that.
'Cause there's a, there's a spot there, that I think they mostly call. That little cutout, that, um, level, that, um. Wood Street, that, not Wood Street, that, um. Size work here.
Right, that little cutout part?
Yeah, it's a weird cutout.
All right, so you.
But I don't have much population.
Go down.
Yeah.
Right, right, right there. Giving that back to you?
I haven't.
I'm, 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 I'm saying, you want me to take that?
If you want, or does it help you or not?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I know, I'm gonna be way open, I just find out where I'm gonna give up.
Well, I mean, I'm happy, I just don't, I just.
So, as it, as it sits right now, uh. As it sits right now, Ward three and Ward six need to balance together.
Yeah, Ward seven is good.
No, it isn't.
Now, I've got, I, I've got.
Uh, Ward seven, you know, I would take some back to it, but Ward, Ward six and Ward three are the two that are the most, uh, out of compliance as it is for.
So, do these numbers here, on the bottom of this, do they reflect the changes that have been made in America?
Everything we've made so far.
Go, go, so I can look at my own Ward, Ward six. All right. Okay. Uh. And five is at twenty-one six. I need to give up.
Yes, sir. Six needs to give up.
All right.
How, probably about six or seven hundred people.
All right, zoom in toward the northern part of my board. All right, 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 right there, uh. If we were to take. That is. If we were to take, what's that, Camellia Lane? Vittora?
You should point, you should.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, all right, you see McFadden? Right here, that's McFadden, to McFadden, take that.
Put that at five?
Yeah, put that at five, I know it's gonna knock him over, but we.
So, that actually puts five at four point five and six at one.
So, five and six are both over right now?
Both over, but within recent.
Are the deviations acceptable?
Yes.
For the data.
For those.
Okay, all right.
I wouldn't be willing to, to gain that, what, what I'm trying to do is. Anything up below, uh, Raymond Road, that, that, you know, that, that's already been in Ward six. You know, I'm, I'm not looking to increase there. Uh, what I'm trying to do is, you know, I have the area over here, all towards. But anything else, I'm not really trying to go below Raymond Road on, on any of those. Uh, is there any other place you could pull it from? Can you, what about over here on the left side? Yeah, that area.
All right.
And separate that Ward four.
Okay. You see this Raymond Road right here?
Okay.
Look at it again.
Or is that?
Hold on, hold on, yeah.
Four?
Yeah, I'll be going into four.
Okay, and where do you, is that as much as you wanted, or do you wanna cut that back some?
Uh, say it one more time?
Wait.
I need, this is.
Six.
Yeah, six.
Six needs to lose.
So, that's currently in four, so.
Yeah, I want, give me this right here, Raymond Road. That little, give me that right there.
Okay. And then you're gonna take out in another location?
And right now, you need to lose.
Oh, I need to lose, oh.
Yeah, you need to lose a thousand seven hundred people.
You need, you need to let burn it, I know burn it.
And, and Ward four needs, well, Ward four is pretty.
It's three.
Yeah, it's three, and three and six need to work right now, as it is right now.
So, I need to lose, okay.
So, you would have to give up some.
Okay.
And it, it may be that you.
I'm trying to give up some, if I gotta give up, because if I give up, all right. Let me, let me give up, what's this, Raymond Road? I don't know what that does, but let me give up, that right there, it gonna do much or nothing.
Is that that sixteen section land at Boston JPS? There's a sixteen section land over there.
Let me see.
Okay, so this would put. With this change, it would actually. Put, um, Ward four at basically one, which is a good spot, and it puts, uh, six, you've lost a percent, so you're down to seven, so you still need to give up more.
All right.
But we're going in the right direction.
All right, let me go back. Uh, I, I wouldn't mind, but.
And it can't be in one place, you know?
Yeah, I mean, look, we gotta give and take, give.
Oh, my God.
I don't mind giving.
But don't nobody wanna take?
Don't nobody wanna take?
Yes, three.
Yeah, I need, but I gotta give.
Do you go anywhere, do you even go?
I don't, I name it four, five, and seven. Uh. And I gotta give up, all right? Up, all right, you see what, what Bond Street is?
You might see that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think, yeah, right here.
Okay.
Who you gonna give it to?
I'm gonna have to give it to seven.
Seven's already over, over.
I know.
But.
Probably don't wanna back it up now. You gotta talk about somewhere. Five is the only other place.
If a five is still open.
What about over to the west with, uh?
He's already over.
Oh, okay.
Are you still making it, Mr.? Just a little bit.
Yeah, just, uh. Yeah, look, look, watch this one, seven, uh.
This area that we eventually put in six could go to four maybe, that might help on.
All right, I, I'll give the four.
I mean, we can look at.
I'll give the four.
Yeah, but we'd be.
But that's not, that's not very much population.
No, it's not.
And, and again, I, I, what I like about that is.
Actually, that.
That, that may be a no.
Okay.
That puts four at three point six four and four at four point four, six.
All right.
I'm sorry, six, yes.
All right.
Now, we just have to work on eight.
I don't know about this.
I'm sorry.
We're gonna have to draw, we're not drawing, Ward three's gonna have to go into five, or one.
And seven, I know, I know I'm gonna have to give up some. Yeah, what's that, a chunk?
Well, I, Ward, Ward one's, we're, we're understanding now, we, uh. We already gave a big chunk towards.
Yeah, uh, you see this right here?
Yes, sir, that's Cottage Grove.
That right there, you don't want? Oh, okay.
Well, I mean, I can, I mean, because that might be the split right between us.
Do that, it's.
Let's go down to Wood Street.
Go down to Wood Street.
Down in that area, down on Portwood, Cassius Street.
Where?
Your side.
Where?
Right.
Right here.
I can't see.
What's your point?
I, well, I can't see it to port.
I see Wilson, Wilson.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Right here?
Yeah. Which, yes, right in that area.
Right there.
Um, yes. That also divides them pretty much, I mean, they're, we're split. Uh, that's a convert and issue period, they're split. I love that empty, I love my churches in there, but it may make more sense, I have that neighborhood from this.
Yeah, go on, come on down to Monique. And square it off right there.
Yeah, I, I thought you was saying, oh.
Go up some, I mean, go back, yeah, go up some more. Just square that little ass street out right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wait, just that, right up, um, Midtown there?
No, 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 no.
All right.
All right.
Just have that, Ward three still needs more.
Hold on, hold on, down, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, that is. Three goes to negative five point three seven, and seven is at two.
All right.
So, we're very.
Very close.
We're very close.
So, we need to get some more to three.
Three needs just a little more.
Maybe a couple hundred people.
How about, uh, extending the, uh, eastern mile on three?
Go back up to Northside, that little area, that one.
Yeah.
That Ward three has.
What if you, what if you took, talk about En- En- Ennis Road?
What about Manhattan, if you took Manhattan, uh, give it back to Ward one, from Manhattan?
You don't need to take none of that.
I'm, but I'm behind.
Oh, yeah.
A thousand, I'm a thousand below, 'cause y'all took so much stuff from me, okay, the, the, oh, you go over here to the Green Hill Square?
I'm sorry, you don't have to point.
So, uh, we took this square here that wasn't Ward one.
Right.
Yes.
If you took, uh, go down Northside Drive, come down Manhattan all the way to, um. Uh, Meadowbrook, back to the interstate, you should put that back in Ward one.
Okay.
And we had to take more from somewhere else, but this, we're, we're working to give to three right now.
All right, yeah, so, I'm just trying to get my, my number up.
We might, we might, we might be able to. Remember that, we can go back to that.
Give, give this to three. Give this to three, just kinda give that, get it to three, let's see where. Oh, it's Cottage Grove.
Is there a portion of that?
This, this, that portion right there, is that five?
Down to May Street.
Yeah, but I don't think it may be listed, it's mostly commercial.
Okay.
I mean, there might be a few, there are a few houses there.
So, by doing that, now you're toward three, below the five, it, it's to negative four point six, which is good.
Okay.
Okay, I, 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 that's fine.
We may. Five point two three and four point four. Five point two three.
Hey, I see, I see, I mean, is there any consideration to, uh, economics or lower part, uh, uh, poverty areas?
It's something that you, I mean, on, on your end, you can consider a lot of things, but for rules of redistribution, that's not part of it. You know, you can have your own reasons to add or take out an area or protect an area, but as far as.
I have a lot of, you know, uh, lower poverty areas.
No, I understand, I'm just saying, it's in terms of redistribution rules and guidelines, that's not one of them, but, but you can always consider that separately.
So, as it stands right now, this would have a nine point six three deviation, and would be a valid plan.
It would be a valid plan, can you back it up so we can look at everything?
Sure, yes.
And this is consistent with the resolution we passed, okay?
Just so you can see it all about, we're gonna move those out of the way.
I still don't think I'm gonna give up, so.
I'm gonna turn the streets off just real quick, so you can see.
Yeah, the only, the only way Brazil to accomplish yours is, somebody's gonna. In order for me to gain, I gotta cut, in order for me to gain, I'm gonna have to give so much up. Like I was giving up to five earlier. That part, precinct sixty-eight, where, where Wingfield is, all that approaching East End, uh, where Gina, I would have to give up sixty-eight and everything right there, uh.
So, you're talking about this area, and what is this area in here?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would have to give that area up, in order for Brazil, to me, is gone.
Okay. And how much, what was the population of this area here?
You may have been though, Brian, you may not have done any harm, but it did make it easier, 'cause you gained it, you gained it too.
You know, what's the population of this area here, Ward?
Uh, yes.
Do you, like, really, right there?
And then I, and then I could gain.
So, saying, so.
Area is five thousand one hundred and eighteen people.
Okay, and scroll over to your right. What I'm trying, I'm, I'm just looking, and look, uh, yeah, I mean, look, everybody's in for the nice cushy neighborhoods, good voting and all that.
Yeah, I'm right.
I'm fighting to keep up, that's not true.
Well, that's not, that's not true for me.
Okay, all I'm saying is that.
I like.
I have, I have a lot to, to deal with, uh, with a lot of these neighborhoods, and there's, there's, a lot of them are in the best, uh, economics, uh, shape. And, uh, I have a few strong ones, but I got a lot of them that need a lot of work, and if you, and if I could work out something where I get a population that doesn't need quite as much attention. Then I might be willing to shift, but down in this area here, down here, there's gonna be a lot of attention.
Okay.
So, that's my, that's my thing, you know, uh.
Let's, let's say this.
I have, this area here is devastated, right here, down here, uh, houses abandoned all over the place. This area here, uh, low poverty, low, a lot of, some renters, but a lot of things going on, have that to deal with. Now, I'm going to be getting more of this area here, and in some cases, I'll be getting the same situation. Give me something stable, and I'll be able to flip this.
Okay, well, let, let, let's, let's say this, this one that we have right now is in compliance, right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I, I, I still have issues.
Well, no, 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 because we can adopt several options and then choose between, this could be one option, that's in compliance. Or do y'all just kinda keep working and narrow down to one option?
Well, I wanted to follow up on what Mr. Hartley said, saying.
But, Mr. Hart, let, let me tell you, Mr. Hartley, this area, let me say this. But Mr. Hart, let, let me tell you, Mr. Hartley, this area, let me say this, first of all, I don't mind taking in where they run that house, cause those are people that need the most representation.
And, and I agree, but, but it's also, it's from a councilman standpoint, it's also a lot of things to keep track of.
Yeah, this is, this is one of my most middle-class areas. This is where two former mayors stay. You got, you got a mayor, a former mayor stayed on Dorit, you got another former mayor that stayed right here on Monaco. This is a very middle-class area in my ward, that's precinct sixty eight.
Okay, but right now, right now, we're trying to balance it, Brian. So if I gain seven thousand more over here, then what?
You would have to give up somewhere else.
Alright, we can definitely, you know, look at, look at that and see where it goes. When that's up y'all.
Nah, you're still with me there. You're also with me there. Alright. So, Brazil, I'm, I'm, I'm fine, either. I'm just trying to help Brazil achieve. Go back, can you go over there again?
Yeah.
Alright. Brazil, you, you wanna kinda go here and then take on this right here, right?
Yeah, I mean-
You wanna take on this and you wanna give up that?
Because the way that the ward is currently drawn is-
It's too spread out. I'd say for me to-
It's too spread out. There is no sense of community, there is no sense of, you still got two different worlds going on right here.
Yeah, so, so, so what's happening, just kinda, and so when you look at it, Ward five, you're the most compact, and what's your spot, but you're the most compact. Everybody else is kinda spread out and, and, and what you're, what, what our colleague, Mr. Brazil, is trying to achieve, he stays. He, he wants to be able to have almost like a West Jackson type of community.
West, northwest.
Yeah, west, northwest type of community.
Right, well, I, I look at picking up this area up here, that's for the sense of village, that's for the sense of, uh, community. Uh, and that, that is, to me, that makes sense. And, but, the economics, you know, you know, that's, again, I look at it as where, I love it, I wanna bring the village together. But I wanna be in a position where, where, uh, spreading out resources, we can actually make a difference. Uh, picking up this is, you know, again, I'm looking at, uh, basically, uh, bare, bare building, a lot of intensive work. But I wa- I wanna pick it up to keep the village going. That adds to my numbers and that's taken away from Ward four. I'm, I'm okay with that. But I can't keep doing that everywhere. Because it, it, it's, it's a lot. So where you might have a geographical, uh, 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 layout that's, uh, intense. I got intense neighborhood that need a lot of work.
So do I.
So do I too.
Uh-uh. Can we just count numbers? We are.
I mean, even here, this is where some of my most affluent folks are.
Under Highway eight?
Under eighteen? You know, we could just go into, okay, let's just, what if, have a couple screens of just what ifs. And, and from a big picture standpoint, look at, uh, you know, look at geographical boundaries, uh, look at-
Alright, can we say this as an option? Say this as an option? And then, and then let's work after we say this as an option. Listen, this is compliance, let's say this is option one, okay? And then, from here, we wanna work on the second option, and I wanna start with Brazil putting yours like you, like, like, like you asked. Alright, so let's say this is option one or something.
So if Brazil went up here?
Then Angelique would go farther east.
Sure.
It'll be worked out between me and Angelique.
And then he would give out eighty, you would give out under eighty, you would give up there? And then go up forty nine?
Uh, on, on, uh, your next plan that we developed?
Yes.
Do you wanna start with this?
Let's start from here.
Start from here.
Let's start from here.
Sorry.
Alright, Brazil.
This is gonna take just a minute to copy.
Okay.
So if anyone needs a restroom break, they're in the stave wall behind you.
Alright, uh, how, how, how long will it take? About five minutes?
Yeah, not even.
Uh, recess for five minutes.
And water and coffee is available too.
Strong, strong.
It is strong.
Yeah, it throws you back, but every sip is gonna reset you. I might not believe for the rest of the week.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. Hold on, everybody, the meeting is still being recorded?
Make sure.
The meeting is still being recorded?
Alright, Jason, you wanna give four?
Is zero.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I guess I gotta pay chopper twelve for the interview. Even come to five, take the interview up, please, and I'll pay.
Well, okay, so there are several. So the word on the identification, that's Alex. Um, and then, of course. She's me.
But then, I started out this person.
Where, if you go over to her house.
Oh, okay. Yeah, right, I'm supposed to take off, take off, take off.
Yeah, she's having lessons.
Oh, I'm happy to hear. You know, I, I see. My president's implementing this very young money. Need it, so I'm gonna let y'all enjoy this good one.
You like this?
No, I do, I like the show, because I need to focus a little bit, but it is strong.
See, now we've got the great call, I don't think I like that space, but, you know, I have some things and everything, that's why I ask you. It's really express, that's what that is.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was going for lunch, I'm sorry.
Separate.
I mean, we, we could take what we have and- So we, we use-
Yeah, I think that's what that's-
Cause they, you, you, you'll be outside. Okay, sure, alright, thank you, see you later. And I think you have a chance to be- Well, you know, luckily, with them not being here, the ten streets can have made it super substantial, maybe even, as you give me half classes. I, I agree, obviously, yeah, the only thing I would worry about, I would only, I would, sorry, because we're not, we're like, just here, uh, I have no idea.
Right, I, I would take, we'd be here first to humor out and tell everybody, and I-
Which she does.
Count to five. We're shut down.
Wasn't even, uh, I was probably gonna ask you that, basically, what we did. For certain amount, uh, using kind of ways.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, which one do you put it, you start forgetting which one you-
That's a great-
We had a schedule for Friday, so the seven.
That's right.
And it's a dump, it's a dump. And the more it's empty, you have, the more they have to work on. What he was, he was asking, if that player ball went. Yeah, I think you're a lot there, but it's not gonna be, be very much this.
Couple tech issues.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, for, you know, you said you, you know, you'd ramble, uh, that's, that's what they're helping with. You tried to come?
Yeah. Tried, I'm not just like, you're former military.
Yeah, and we, we bring out the hell out of some military.
Oh, everybody's better.
We know Brian, okay.
I'm here. Have a juice.
Okay.
We gonna make it. Just technically, locally.
There. There, you're fine. Yes, sir. Okay. I'm not there, bitch. Look at how new, it's at Old Starko Street. Alright, uh, where's, oh, she's not sorry. I think, uh, Council Stoves is good. He, he wanted to buy a dish back, so now he has it back.
He lost it.
Yeah, he lost it the first time. It was, it was actually in, uh, seven. The Wood Street area.
Yeah, someone like to coffee around here.
Let, let.
There's one with coffee. You don't drink the coffee?
You only need a half a cup a day with that kind of.
Oh, yeah, do a little water after that and you're good.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm staying over the whole night, pick up everything. Alright, um.
Where's Virgin?
What's about that, tell Virgin?
In the restroom.
That's your restroom. Yeah. We are council stands out of recess, uh, where we're picking back up, uh, if, if we can. Go back, let, let me say this, colleagues, uh. I, I do understand, and I, we are all hearing the, uh, desires of everyone, uh, and we wanna try to get everybody's desire in. Uh, if, if you all would allow me, uh, to make some suggestions, uh, through, through, through the lines. That's not to say that this is final, but it's just looking at a way to achieve, uh, what Councilman Brazil, Councilwoman Lee, and some others might want to achieve. And then we'll, we'll kinda go back from there. So we could go ahead and, the first suggestion I made with Ward Six, uh, and this doesn't, Councilman Hart, it doesn't say, I just wanna look at what would have to happen population wise. So I'm gonna take that down to MacGyver. Uh, that first suggestion, the very, very first suggestion I made.
Uh, bring that down to Cal.
Yep. Alright, and then go to the, oh, wait, once you finish that. Alright, go to the west side of Ward Six, with Ward Six and Four border. Alright, uh. Give me, right up here, where, where it looks like, uh, backwards Louisiana, up toward the north part.
Here.
Uh-uh, oh, oh, I mean, to the right, to, hold on, where's my corner, I'm sorry. Right here.
Yes, oh, yes.
Give that, uh, to me. Alright, uh.
You want this as well?
I might as well take, take out that, huh, bro?
If you took this, it would keep the neighborhood together.
Okay, yeah. Alright, yeah, I don't play Safari, I don't have right there. Alright. Alright, Ward Six is at eighteen, now go down. Down Raymond, go this way. Yeah, that, uh-uh, I'm sorry, yeah, the, the other way, yeah, 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 yep. Alright, where is West St. Hills? Right here? Okay. Uh, Rucalo. Alright, I am at eighteen thousand, right? If we took.
Yes.
Give me your suggestion, Brazil.
What can you talk about? Uh, I'm gonna turn this, um, number on.
Alright. What? What are you, what are you saying, Brazil?
Below eight, eighteen.
All that below eighteen?
Just.
Alright, do everything below eighteen.
Because it's.
It's gonna take me way above that.
See what that looks like.
Oh. Go, go, go ahead with everything, let's just see.
They say afternoon, dude.
So. Okay, now, if.
Now, now go, now go up.
Ward Four.
Alright.
Bring him up into Ward Two.
Alright, yeah, lead it right there, now go up and take on President Chiles and clean. And then we go from there sometime.
Holy crap, you went to twenty, you're over, way over.
Oh, oh.
Ward Four into Ward Two, up forty-nine.
Alright.
That area. So basically.
All this, all this in Ward Four?
Yep, all that Ward Four.
Take him all the way up.
I would say Mega Eppes.
To the right to.
Set the road.
You want Mega Eppes to be the border, right? That might work.
It's still, um, stuff on the right side.
You want this as well, up to, uh, Beasley or up to.
Or, no.
Up to this area.
Stay on that side of the. Yeah.
Oh, wow.
What's that look like? So that gets four, four, it's still low.
There's not a lot of people on there.
Um.
It's not.
It's thirty-two hundred people.
It's more than its cavity.
But you took so much down.
Um, to the south, so Ward Four still needs to pick up.
Twelve percent.
They're negative twelve. Yeah.
So, um, you know, at least two thousand more people probably.
You lost too much in the, in the.
Go, go, alright, go back down to my, go back down to Ward Six.
Road.
Yeah. Alright, you see.
Well.
Alright. Alright, where? Yeah. Highway eighteen. All of this, right here, up to Raymond Road, like this.
Two.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm confused, hold on, this is Mad Eyes.
That's serious.
Yep. We need to actually split. Cause this, this would be seated here, this right here. Unless you come in and just do this.
See it back.
Alright, Willow Wood and City Hills? Yeah, this right here.
Willow Wood has nine hundred acres.
That should, right here, that mean you know.
Oh, I know.
Alright.
You mind, you don't mind?
Now, we could always go back up there where you just took some of that and, and start putting some of it back if you wanted to.
Okay, what, what is that, okay, so four is good.
So that's for me, I, I need to pick up.
You still need to pick up.
Alright. So. But, you trying to give me over?
You take back.
You trying to give me over three? Hold on, go, go back, you wanna give me over three? Hold on. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, move up right here. Alright, you see? This right here. That right there.
Okay. Goes back to six?
Yep.
We.
Get down, get down to minus.
Yeah, we're still playing, and, and, you know, I'm gonna end up going back over to your area.
No, no, they, you can't, no, it's, alright, take over, we'll, we'll go back there.
Okay, those two are at negative two point nine and positive two point nine, or two point three five and negative two point nine.
Alright.
Those are good.
Alright, so let's go to two. You like that?
That's better.
Alright, take two, go, come over toward your east.
Wait a minute, how, you took, you took here, this is my war. Hold on, if, if you don't get to other meeting, you, it's, you get to Ward One, hold on. I, I still say this, but you're doing my war.
This is just an option for, to help. As I mentioned.
I already helped her a lot, she's to take, she thinks.
No, this is helping Brazil, in order to do it, just gotta shit.
But you're squeezing everything out, out of Ward One, I've gone from the most populous to the last least populous, based on what you've done so far.
It's just another scenario.
Okay, what were you saying?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Banks.
How much have you lost, uh, to?
What, Mr. Banks?
Go ahead.
I, um, I just have one over, I, I, you know, over. Are too concerned, and that is that we can sit here and work on this over and over and over again today. And, and then when it gets to Mr. Stokes, it's gonna be a completely different scenario, and so what I would like to see just is that you get, you know, two or three options today. And then either you or this lady or the two together get Mr. Stokes before the next meeting, and let's see how he's feeling about, and, and he very well may have some ideas as well.
Yeah, I, I just got off the phone with him.
Okay.
And he says he will be ready to, uh, uh, he and I are gonna work on our, our border lines, but he said he'll, he'll be ready to have some ideas about Ward, uh, Ward Three.
So, so the thing is, that, that is, that is the right way I was taking.
Okay.
Just kinda trying to get everybody's ideas in at least three options.
Okay.
And then we'll have those, and then, you know, when we come back, we can talk about those if we need to come back, but, uh.
Now, you know, I don't mind over he, how, oh, he can't lose, I was about to say, I'm gonna go into Ward Three, but.
Ward Two has, has to pick up about five percent, well, no, six, six percent.
But he can't lose.
Huh?
I was gonna say, he can't lose.
Well, Foot might get to take in some of seven, where's Seven?
Seven.
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll get to it, let's, let's look at two picking up. What if you were to take, go over toward the right? Alright. Sue me or something. Alright, what if, this is all plantation.
Up the north side.
This is all plantation, yeah. What if, this, alright, all of this, right here, going to two, let's just see.
Well, I'm against that.
I, I know, okay. I mean, just like Hartley is against the, what, what we did at the bottom, just kinda looking at an option that suits Brazil, and then if you wanna look.
Well, suit Mr. Brazil, he's not even close to this.
Sorry. Well, he has to.
Yeah, but you picked up mine, so now I gotta go.
Uh, go on and get those.
That, that gets, uh, down now.
That takes care of two.
That takes care of two, that gets two right where it used to be?
Yes.
Alright, now, go down. Down, just, yeah, go down some, some more. Some more. Yeah, forgot, some more. Some more. Alright, if, if we gave. Councilwoman Liz.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, just, just an idea.
No, no.
Alright, if we gave.
Seven has to have that.
No, they got East Oak, Ward One can have that. You can't take all that stuff up north and then, then.
Let's see.
No, we can't do that.
Let's just see.
This is kind of, and leftover, really, I mean, we're staying.
Let's just see what the numbers, let's just see what the numbers look like, if we were to give him East Oak.
That, that's not East Oak.
What's that?
That's leftover.
That's what you call leftover.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's just East Oak Drive.
I don't know how many people are in there.
Mr. Banks, I'm gonna play.
That's between you and Foot, now?
No, it's not.
I'm just playing.
But not everyone's sitting there doing that.
I'm just, I'm just, alright.
No, I'm telling you, absolutely not, Ward Seven has to fight really hard to get that, about, like, less, about twenty years.
It's still, it's still, it's still wouldn't do anything.
What did do, what's the population of it?
Uh, that, that, there is, uh, one thousand three hundred ninety, basically fourteen hundred people.
So it's not very many people, but, but Ward, Ward Seven needs those people.
Okay.
Can you hear that, I just, okay, I guess I get no say.
Go ahead, you're the mediator, I get no say, okay, go ahead, Mr. Foot, go ahead, go.
Well, you, you took a whole bunch of, you know, good neighborhoods away from Ward One up there.
Let's.
What are two missing?
Let's go back up to Ward Two and take out what we just did in Ward One, and go down.
Like, right there, right instead of.
I went from fifteen percent above to fifteen percent below.
So you wanna get this back?
Hit, hit the, hit the red.
Red, okay. Where is, uh?
Like, give that back.
Is that May, no, that's not May, who is this?
Okay.
Go back to May, where, and three, Ward Two and Three, May.
Go down versus over.
Right, yeah, that's cool, because that's the Drywood and the crossover over to Ridgewood, is that Ridgewood?
Ridgewood is right here, yeah.
Yeah, let me see what that looks like, if I take that.
Uh, sorry, here, give, give that back.
I can't, I don't know. So we can.
Just go down, just go down Ridgewood Road is the.
This, this part right here.
You just go straight down Ridgewood Road.
Okay, this whole little section.
All the way to, uh.
Network.
Up to Ridgewood, from fifty-five to Ridgewood.
To Camp Mark. You wanna go all the way?
I don't wanna go to Camp Mark, cause I don't go that far.
You gotta, you gotta take the Oyo Hotel then.
No, no, no. Oh, no.
Stokes, Stokes has Oyo, by the way.
Oh, no. How far out did you wanna go? Definitely, I don't go past North Side, I mean, none of that, I don't even go that far right now, so like, to right here.
Oyo get to. Not, but not to nor, not south of North Side, no.
No, I don't even wanna go to North Side, just this little part.
Alright, but they take.
See, then like, maybe.
You don't need to take nothing from there.
Okay.
But take that part, that top part of the triangle there.
We already took that part off.
No, it's still blue.
Then go back up?
Yeah, go, go back and give her back that last change.
Give Ward One back this.
I thought that was already, oh, we already did that, that's the M four. It's too far.
See, see if you can put that back into Ward One.
Okay.
This is M four, right up in here.
Where?
Right up in here.
Okay. There's nothing there. It's commercial. There?
That's right.
But they don't play. I got plenty of that. So that makes the line Ridgewood. Okay, and where does that put May?
Seventeen.
Oh, that's a mess.
Yeah, you have to pick up.
You gotta, you gotta pick up.
I thought we had already done one part of county line.
You just gave it back.
No, it was the second revision that we took back. Okay. So, so keep that same place that we had at first.
No, 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 still, I think this is a better play right here.
Yeah, but look at my numbers.
Pick up, well, they go back to where you, 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 your numbers were, you, you gave up all this ground to, to Brazil.
Isn't this what we had at first?
It was.
Let's go back there. So that?
How big is that population by itself right there?
I think she needs to go back, go to Port Pae.
That's ten percent of Ward One, gotta be kidding me.
Ward One at twenty-two thousand.
What is that now?
Uh, that's.
That puts one at two point three five. And.
Wait, wait. Nineteen six.
Yeah, this is, so these are the number count.
Okay, so one is at negative ten, two is negative six, three is negative four. Four is two point three, Ward five is at twenty point six one, six is negative two point five, and Ward seven is one point three eight.
Honestly, where it is right now is closer to where it was as far as the amount of, as we were when we started before we.
So that's, let, let me look at Ridgewood going down.
See, we're, but here's the point, Ward one's only ten percent below, she needed to be going after where the population is, it's in Ward five now.
But I don't tell four or five.
Well, that, that's because you get squeezed, been squeezed out. Uh, you gotta get to the people in Ward five, they've got twenty-six thousand.
What we need to do is give Ward five's population to an adjoining four, and then you take from that order.
Right.
And that's why I say I can see.
See, but you, but Virgin won't let us go into the the leftover area.
That's why I don't.
Well, that's, that's got to be left over, that's kind of gross, right there. Collar, you know, that.
You gotta, this, this, you gotta go back, you can't go after me, you, you're, you know, there's no muscle, it's all fat, I mean, it's all muscle.
Okay, what about, uh, what about, who has that clicker, right there, look at that.
Why don't you give.
Look at that part, uh, for me.
All right, so.
We're gonna have to go somewhere into seven or something, because.
No, no, Castle, believe, so why don't you gain, get that extra acres back? Make the ass, yeah, get extra acres back.
Okay, let's go back to forty.
Yes.
All right, so we can make.
Let's do the, that and back to me.
Maybe I'm just up outside of this one.
Y'all gonna draw me out of my ward.
You're trying to draw me out of.
Where is your residence?
I'm right off my hollow colony. I'm hanging on. Okay, what does that do to me, y'all? All right, I'm done.
It's much better.
Okay, I'm done, for me, for, in this scenario. And four is still at basically one percent, so that's, that's okay.
See, you have experience issue, there's a thirty percent difference between Ward five and Ward one.
Ward one is now below, so Ward one needs to pick up some population, and Ward five needs to give up. Where's five?
On the, on the Ward three, you look over here on Ward three, not that they've got extra population, but we gave that whole block. And that was before I realized y'all were gonna try to take, you know, uh, the Ridgewood area away. The whole block there from, from North State Street, um, along North Side Drive and Meadowbrook, all the way across to the interstate. If we bring that back, back to Manhattan.
Okay.
And so, uh, so the, the, if you take the block that goes from North Side Drive and I fifty-five over to Manhattan and down to Meadowbrook. You put that back in Ward one, what, what would that do for me?
So you're keep, you would keep San Richard's?
Right.
It just go, oh, that makes sense, but.
Just out of.
All right, so what's that do for you?
Uh, it gets you down to, uh, eight percent.
Down to minus eight percent.
Yes, you get minus.
Over, over a little bit more.
Go to, uh, what, Meadow?
Is there another boundary that would be?
Meadow, uh, yeah, that, that, yeah.
Does Meadow Ridge go all the way across there?
Meadow. Yeah, Me- Meadowville.
Yeah.
Now, this has hurt Stokes. So that puts him down. What's that?
Stokes, remember, cause.
Okay, well.
Harley passes, Harley's the only one up.
Yeah, so what if you go.
But, yeah, right now.
What about that road right there?
Yeah, just trying to add a little bit of the time to see.
Okay.
That would get you at four point four percent.
Take them all the way over.
Yeah. Yeah. That's better, it's a little bit, it's a little, it's a three point eight eight, negative three point eight eight percent.
Okay, so. Yeah.
It's okay, it's more, more elements.
Yeah, all right, so now, let's go, so five is the only one that really needs to give up on this one.
Five needs to give up and three needs to get.
All right, so five.
I've heard from Stokes that he's coming in here with a clean slate. So whatever proposals we come up with.
We just put some options, that's all, that's all.
Yeah.
So in this option, what would you lose if?
Um, y'all, I, if I need to, I could give up. To for Stokes, yeah, but I don't want to, I'm just trying to work with saying that, for the sake of compromise, we'll do the best possible.
I don't think it's necessary with, with the way this plan's evolving at, at the moment, I don't think it's necessary, but.
Yeah. I think if five.
Stokes can definitely come back.
Yeah, yeah.
Very.
What about this capital?
Maybe, maybe you have a capital?
Capers. All this right here?
No.
I'm talking about giving that to Stokes.
Uh, Stokes and Stokes said that he and I would sit down and look at our maps.
I wouldn't leave, good job, Lee.
No, we, let's, let's look at the option.
Still, he's got something to say.
Yeah, he's still got something to say. Just paying.
Could we get a large map like this with the numbers on it?
The numbers are not gonna show up, I can tell you that, the, the problem is, I can't print one big enough, I can print big maps, but I can't print them big enough to have all the numbers on there.
You're talking about the little red numbers or the?
Just electronic copy then, can I get electronic?
I can try to, I, and I'm not saying that because I don't want to.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know that I can, I can try to, I can try to.
But just like this.
Keep, yeah, keep, keep.
Keep going down all the way to seven.
The, um. The capability of this program is that I can zoom in and make those numbers appear, but even, even at this level, there's some that aren't appearing.
Can you, can you create PDF?
I can try to.
Thank you.
Uh, where, where is that?
Okay, so that gets Ward three to negative seven point five eight, and Ward five is still heavy at sixteen.
So it still needs to pick up some more.
Oh, 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 go back over here, go.
So is there?
This, this right here. This right here.
Okay.
Yeah. There's a lot of zeros in there. All that over there is just some.
Up to the left of that, I guess.
Go to the purple.
All that that he picked up over there.
Yeah, this was originally in, originally.
That, so the all that is originally in three?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so it, it gives him back what he already had.
I believe it's wrong.
Okay. Let's see what that is, gets us.
That gets, uh, that gets three where it used to be, but five still needs to.
Five still needs to.
Five still needs, but three, that would get three, satisfies far as the.
Go back, go back down to Ward six, Ward five, Ward, trying to see. All right, can you zoom in? Go down. Uh. That's what I'm seeing, uh, MacDown Drive, MacDown Road. Come up where we, where Scanlon is. Give this Scanlon. Jordan and Castle to MacFadden. Get it, get it to me. Or back to me. Oh, let's see, what, what? What is that?
That's just a little too much.
A little too much?
Yes, sir.
Take that, yeah. What's that, Woodside?
Yeah, that gets, it's probably gonna have to be some that, that wards, that wards around. Five have, each have to take just a little bit, or maybe a couple of them need to take just a little bit from five. I don't, I think if you push it off, you're not gonna push it all the way to one four.
No, no, no. So where, what does that take us right there, what does that put?
Stokes getting a little bit?
Yeah, that gets you to four point six and five, and one four, so maybe.
Oh, well, that, it'll be five point one four in here.
When it starts.
Let's make the change, just look at the number real quick. Um, that five point one four, fifty-four point.
Six.
It's gonna be under here.
That works?
It might, it looks like it will. Four point one six, four point six four and five point one.
Can you blow that, I mean, minimize so we can see the whole thing?
Nine point seven eight.
So it's, I mean, uh, as far as the guidelines go, it, it does meet those number requirements.
It looks like we're still what?
Looks like we're so.
Me?
You're, I mean, we're all up there. Yeah, we're all within aviation, we're within that.
We're at ten percent aviation, but you are, you have the least.
Yeah, the least, but, but again, it's, it's still within that threshold.
I like that as an option. So it's a, you don't, if you wanna make a little change.
No, but I see the only where I can go is at a three, and me, can't.
You can't stand to lose nothing.
Why, you go to Ward four, can't you?
I mean, I would first do.
Ward four's over. Can't go to me, 'cause I'm minus eight hundred fifty-two.
That makes sense.
I mean, this option is, this there.
Well, I mean, Advantage Lee needs more, I mean, Ward, Ward four, we could give more.
She really doesn't need it, so then she wanna look at it on the next call, right?
Yeah, 'cause I don't mind looking at Chastain and all that area where the Advantage is, McWilly, all of that is, I'd like to look at that.
Uh, what area?
We could maybe do that on the third option.
All right, this.
I would, if we could make changes to this one to satisfy, to, to, to get where she wants to be, there's still room to move on this one.
Okay, let's go to North Side Drive, Ward two and Ward, Ward two and Ward three intersect. Like, if I could pick up, I'm gonna go through the street names over here, but like.
Manhattan's where it's at, so.
Yeah, I don't even see it, okay, there's none of that.
See Chastain.
If I could like, take some of like. I, I, I don't want the Oyo, but, but I want, I want McWilly, I want McWilly and Advantages and all of that.
Well, already get McWilly without taking the Oyo.
You would get it, you would get.
I think we would get the Oyo torn down, 'cause they gonna hear from me every second.
You could just come down Manhattan Road and go over.
Where is it, please? From here?
Yeah, that, see Manhattan, that block.
I wanna go all the way to North Side, oh, but I guess I have to, that's Chastain.
That would go on, uh, Ward two, which is currently at negative four point six four, up to a positive three point eight three.
Okay, but where's, where's McWilly? Is it in there in that little?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in this little area.
See McWilly drive right there?
Yeah, that's in McWilly.
That's it, that's, I'm good. Got another integrated school.
Now, if we did that, then, we're three, we're three's gonna have to pick back up some, uh, of the population.
Well, that goes back into what Castle woman Lindsay was, uh, I think.
Yeah, she's gonna give that up, well, we're gonna look at it. And it may just be a section, but it's. Yeah, it's a couple of streets.
Yeah, look, start, yeah, just start kind of piecing up. What does that do?
Um, I mean, it helps, but it's not.
I mean, there's some big industries right there, I, at the end of the day, I'm, it's more population.
What does that do?
It's not more.
It's not enough?
It's not enough. That, that whole group that's selected right now is only six hundred fifty-six people. Yeah, it's, it's not, I mean, but for some reason, that neighborhood was divided, and making it whole might be better.
I mean, we could definitely put it in there, but it's just not gonna, it'll help, but it's not gonna.
We still need to give up some more. This, uh, does he need to go in the mirror?
All the way to the south.
Let me, what about, and I'm just asking just because of the line. That if we continued over a little bit. Or there.
The north, north view drive, that'd be a clearer line.
Yeah, I mean, uh, he's already got most of north view anyway. And that's West Bonner, ain't he?
Not that.
What, no, I mean.
That area.
Right there.
Let me see, let me see, what's that history?
Uh, I think this.
Royal Street.
Royal Street.
Royal Street.
I don't think there are a lot of people living here, but.
Three each way.
Yeah, but yes, I mean, yes, he could take that. That's West Bonner.
So three still needs to gain some, um.
He's getting a more commercial tax base.
Five still has room to give to three as far as nowhere goes.
Give, give that back. Give that back, what, what was taken from Stokes earlier, give it back to him. Up at that top, yeah, right there. That Stokes gets back what he had.
There's a six point.
Or just, yeah, that, uh, zeros.
Oh, I see.
That's it. On the five.
I think that's it. So this is an option two?
Option two?
We need an option six.
I don't think we need an option three, seven.
I don't need them.
Blow it up so that we can see, I mean, I blew it up, but you know what?
Yeah, I know.
Not going forward.
You gotta have a part of that, oh. I thought you said you had airport.
You have a bar.
What do you get done at the bar shop?
It's definitely more complex than it was from before.
It does.
Does look more clean.
It does look, it looks more clear.
Oh, my gosh, it's better than.
And I can show you the, the other plans as well, you can kinda look at them both if you want to.
Let, let's, let's see both plans side by side, Castle, how you feel about that?
I'm still got miffed about losing so much in northeast, if I go, if you rest Ward one.
Which, but MR, I ain't sure what's no more.
What about that purple part that verge is? That's the airport, oh, no, I'm not talking up to the side, I'm talking about just where it, like, kinda carves into Ward one, that's, that's your leftover.
Yeah, she, she.
I'm not in that verge, I, I thought two Ward would help get that in, um, Ward seven needs that.
Well, you need, since you're overseeing that, you need to get the, 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 um, parking contract with the VA back to the city of Jackson, since that's in Ward leftovers.
I don't know anything about that.
Well, hell, you can read about it.
Oh, what, what year?
It's on Jackson Jumbo.
I don't think so.
It's only five point five million dollars over fifteen years.
I think. I think it might not be a problem.
Will we be able to get a copy of this to our clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, this is just a discussion, right? So no votes required.
No, no, it's just options. This is just to get the conversation.
Options, and then, Councilwoman, you have to do public hearing.
Yeah, and I, and then, uh, like I said, I think we got Councilman Stokes, he's gonna go back to, back to the, uh, original screen of where we're at now. And he's gonna make some decisions, so...
Uh, Mr. Banks, when is the...
Next, uh, clerk?
These are the two options.
The question was, when, when was the public hearing?
We have not scheduled, we said we're gonna get the two meetings underway at D U B D, and then come back.
Are you guys listening, or are you guys... Alright, so, I, I guess my concern is, I, I like both these options, and these are doable options. I don't see the need for a third option. Uh... Colleagues, I don't know if a second meeting, or a second discussion to rehash these lines is necessary.
We need Stokes to send it.
Well, I, I would, I would help, I would vote for a second.
Well, hold, 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 hold. The question would be, is he going to show up at the second?
Yeah, but whenever it comes to vote, he's gonna be there.
This is, it won't be a vote, it will be a discussion again to draw more lines.
Okay, well, I'm sure he's gonna have some input, and, and being that he's in the negative, he's, he's in the negative like Ward five's in the negative, then, uh, then he's gonna have...
Being in the negative, no?
Well, well, that's according to this, and this is not permanent, is it?
No.
Okay, these are, so, so let, let, let me explain the process.
Ward one is the most negative.
Oh, that's, that's...
I mean, the original shows Ward five and Ward three having lost the most amount of population.
Right.
So the key is, those areas need to be expanded, and he, and he will have input. Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Alright, and we can sit around, and we can come up with this option, that option, and seems to don't, we're not settled on one of these, but that's, that's, that's gonna change. Alright, so let me say this, let me say this, let me say this, let me make this clear, alright? We, we got, we, we got, the, the option to do this is via another discussion, okay?
Well, let's go another one.
No, no, listen, let me finish. The option to draw lines here with this technology is during a discussion. In order for him to participate, he would have to show up at a discussion. When it gets on the agenda, it will be on the agenda as an ordinance, and by that time, the majority rules.
Okay, well, I would...
Oh, if, let me finish. If Stokes desires to have input on the drawing on these maps, he needs to show up at the discussion.
That's what I was going to say. I will try to do my best to encourage him to have a seat right now at the table.
Alright, so this means, like, thank you for...
Another discussion meeting.
Alright, alright, so colleagues, Councilman Hartley is saying to do another discussion meeting, so that Stokes, now, this is going to be my ask. If Stokes does not confirm to come to the next discussion, would it be alright if we move forward with the two options?
Have you talked to Stokes at all?
I'll give a talk.
As, as, as the president, have you reached out to Stokes and asked him about it? I, I'm just, I'm just curious, because again, he, you know, Ward three and Ward five carry other people. And to, for the other wards to say that they...
We giving more people.
We giving you more.
But I can't help if he doesn't show up for a discussion.
Okay.
And both things would, well, I, this thing, I'll do my best to make sure he's, he, I just, I've talked with him, and he's here. Councilwoman Lindsay?
Mr. Banks, if I could have a leftover, I would have to help you.
Mr. Patrick, Mr. Flipp, my leftover, I'm talking about giving up leftover Ward one.
Well, good, okay, thank you. You still got one, I'm out, okay, alright. Alright, so...
Can we, you wanna look at it with the numbers?
Let's, let's...
We'll do it at the next one. You sure?
So...
I'm gonna call with Meadowbrook.
You gonna call, alright, so listen, let's go ahead and schedule for a second discussion.
The second decision has already been scheduled for?
Yes.
What day is that?
June seventh?
I can't think of it.
Okay.
I have to go, I, I'll attempt.
Okay. The other day, um, Ms. Gray, would you give us?
Let me go check our...
Well, well, I'm just gonna tell you, um, I just want, I just want to get a stop, 'cause we can all, we can get a majority to agree.
I think we have two viable options.
Without my having to give a flip.
Without, yeah, I, 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 I think, you know, first of all, if, if you look at where Councilman Stokes has expanded, it actually goes back to what he had previously. Uh, Councilman Hartley picked up some of my board, you know, and then he picked up some of four, which, what he asked for. And so at the end of the day, we have to make a change, uh, and this is going to be, uh, decided with the majority vote of this, with this body. And we, we, we're gonna try, I, I think we're all trying to give, or allow input from everybody, but I think that this is important, and I think, I have to say, this is participatory process.
So, nobody's spotting the airport?
Yeah.
No, dear.
We'll let you have it.
That's all you.
Alright, uh, yes?
June third was also unavailable, date fifteen, if you need.
The sooner the better, when we look at our timeline, what's, what, what do you look like?
What day is the June the third? What is the day?
That's next Monday. It's the day before fifteen tomorrow.
At ten AM? And then we would do the public hearing after that?
I just need time to advertise the public hearing.
Uh...
I just need time to advertise the public hearing.
Okay. Alright, uh... June third? Yeah, alright. June third at ten AM. June third at ten AM, uh... Alright, alright, June, June third, alright. If any, any other, alright, uh, I'll, I'll get with you on a public hearing date as soon as we can do that, June third. Any other questions or comments, any other questions or comments? Let, let me say this in closing, uh, colleagues, and let me just say this for the sake of the public, this, which is witnessed today, is a participatory process. And in order to have a voice in discussions, one must be present in those discussions. We cannot delay our timelines and deadlines as a body to get to a place and make the decision, so that we can get these things done. We have to do it, there's nowhere around, and I'm gonna appreciate my colleagues for being here for this process. If there's nothing that's to come before this body, this means adjournment.
Thank you, Shanika, and Mr. Park, this is it.